Welcome, everyone, to Lancaster City Council Meeting. City Clerk?
Agency Director, Authority -- City Council Member, Agency Director, Authority Member, Molly?
Present.
Man.
Present.
Underwood Jacobs?
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman, Chris?
Present.
Mayor Chairman, Paris? We have a quorum.
Move to excuse Mayor Paris.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The invocation, I understand Madeline Schaefer, Ms. Lancaster, is going to do it for us. Madeline?
If everyone please bow their heads. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us all here today and giving us the opportunity to honor you in the best way possible that we know. Help us just to bring all peace to everything that we have in the issues in the alley and just honor you in everything we do. Do this name, amen.
Amen. Madeline, you do the pledge for us?
Sure. Right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madeline, if you wait right there, Councilman Molly's going to come down and make a presentation to you.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Come on. Do we face this way or the other way?
Pull the mic back this way. You can face the crowd.
Okay. Well, Madeline Schaefer, congratulations first of all.
Thank you.
Madeline, she graduated with the honor from Perkley High School this year.
Once again.
Once again, I guess. I'm trying to... Well, her commitment, the various thing, activity, program she did for -- and I have personally seen her everywhere, all the local events, she's everywhere, and we're so proud of you. The counselor at Royal Family Kids Camp, participation of City of Lancaster Youth Commission, Youth in Government, Ribbon Cuttings, Celebrate America, Street of Lancaster, Christmas on the Boulevard, VIP events at MOA, and these are very important events for the City of Lancaster's, and thank you again. And academic honors and awards, National Security Society of High School Scholars, Spanish Honor Society, Honors List and Principal List, very good. Alpha Charter, this is Gil 2016, Activities, Captain University Chair Team, Student Ambassador, Member of ASB, Superior Chair Committee, and she's attending San Francisco State University. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And this is on behalf of our council and the mayor.
Thank you so much.
But we are very proud of you, and we would like to see you around.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madeline. City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
I need a motion and a second for the minutes.
Make the first motion for the minutes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Consent calendar? I don't think we have any speaker cards, nothing to be pulled.
I'll make a motion then to approve the consent calendar as comprised.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second, to approve the consent calendar as currently comprised, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. NB1, Mr. Dricke?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chris, council members. I just wanted to give you an update on some of the work that the Public Safety Office is doing on behalf of the city as it relates to our restorative justice model. And just to refresh you, that restorative justice views crimes as more than breaking the law, it also causes harm to people, relationships in the community. In essence, it's a different way to look at how to manage issues as it relates to those persons in the community that break the law. And it's a different mindset that relates more to our intervention and diversion model. So, a more formal definition is restorative justice is a theory of justice that emphasizes repairing the harm caused by criminal behavior. So, what we've been doing for some time and talking through the Criminal Justice Commission and presentations before the council is looking at different ways to manage that intervention and diversion model, especially if it relates to juvenile crime. And especially in light of legislative decisions with AB 109, Prop 47, and specifically lately, Prop 57, as it relates to juveniles and adults, but specifically for juveniles, it's made it basically impossible to move forward with juveniles on diversion unless we handle things at a very low level of intervention at that first offense, first low-level offense. So, there's benefits to that. It reduces repeat offenders typically, especially as we've seen through a program that I'll talk about tonight with juveniles. It doubles the offenses that are brought forward as it relates to juvenile delinquency or juvenile crime, so more things can be brought forward because it's more of a diversion model that keeps people out of court, being that our juvenile justice system is overwhelmed based on the low number of courts that we have specifically in Los Angeles County and the elimination of certain camps as well as the state system for juveniles. So, it's a mindset that we've put in place, more of a tool to be able to address things in the community as it relates to crime, but without the support that we don't -- excuse me, without the support that we are currently not receiving from the state or the county as it relates to juvenile crime. So, an example of that would be, as we've talked before, like the Antelope Valley Education Alliance. It's where we did a project for truancy involvement and what was impacting our daytime crime rate in the area, specifically around Antelope Valley High School. And we're into our third year now of that program, and I'm glad to tell you, at the end of the results for this last school year, we have an 80% improvement based on those students that have been involved in the program and their attendance in school. Also, what that's done has resulted in a 65% reduction in just daytime burglaries alone, just in the dry area for that campus. So, there's a direct correlation between student attendance and daytime crime. But other things have grown from that. It's created relationships for the city, along working with the school district and community partners in the area to look at other issues. Why aren't kids coming to school? What are the outlying issues there that aren't just about why kids don't go to class or why they're so far behind? And what's been interesting about that is, beyond the scope of just the truancy model and the crime impact in the area, it's also developed relationships with other organizations that I'll read a list and do later. The other thing is, is with our juvenile diversion mindset, is diverting these kids before they get into the system. And the reality of this is, and I've brought this forward through the Criminal Justice Commission, is we have one hearing officer now for all of Los Angeles County that manages all the juvenile citations. So, as law enforcement goes out and cites these juveniles out of the schools or in the community, all those citations are processed, and they go, there's one available hearing officer down in Van Nuys for the entire county. That's well over 3,000 citations a month. So, the backlog, you can imagine, is ridiculous. So, the idea behind diversion is, is to catch those individuals that are into that delinquency or that at-risk model ahead of that time before they become part of that system. It also benefits them down the road because there's a mindset among the youth that, once you turn 18, everything's forgiven, you're exonerated of everything you've ever done, and that's actually not true. If you're going to get a job at some point in a government agency or work for a government contractor or anything in that capacity, you're not going to be eligible, it will become part of your record. So, taking that model, and, you know, the Sheriff's Department already does that on a certain basis, depending on the type of incident, and elaborating more on the service providers and leaning on the community-based organizations, the Pastors Association and such in the community, to create that mentoring model for these kids to change that behavior. Part of that is, is we work closely with the Department of Probation. We're building new relationships with them as they've had a change in the administration of their department. We have a new bureau chief in our area who is a local person, who has a vested interest in our community, and has already guaranteed us to provide us exclusively a probation officer to work directly with us as we work to enhance this diversion model. Also, along with the Sheriff's Department, collaboration with the school deputies unit, also working closely with all the other service providers that exist through Los Angeles County or the state here in our area that work through DCFS, DPS, mental health, all of them as well, for service providers. And the mindset behind this is to eliminate these issues, change the behavior of these individuals, in restorative justice to make victims whole again, okay, by creating some collaboration between victims and the agencies involved to make a determination on what's an appropriate method for restoring victims back to make the community whole. Also, the idea behind it is to work with those service providers out there beyond the initial crime issues to deal with what other issues may be going on in the household or creating this dynamic. So, it's really trying to get to the root of what is the causation, rather than being reactive but being more proactive in that model. So, those are some of the things that we'll be bringing forward. I can give you an idea, just the relationships will be developed through that with the LA Sheriff's Department and other law enforcement agencies, specifically referral for the VITA program, county probation, parole division of CDCR as it relates to adults and reentry. The local, all the local school districts will be reaching out. We have a very strong interest within high school district for expansion of that truancy program because it was, we were tested, the city's deeply invested in that program. Now, the school district's going to take it on, on them, and move forward with it and enhance it. And then, through those community-based service providers, I can give you examples like AV Partner for Health for Referral for Services, Paving the Way Foundation for a reentry project that the city collaborates in on people being released on AB 109. And then, we're going to be working more with adult probation as it relates to releasees and that criteria for release and how they're dispersed in our community.
Any questions?
I do. As a community member, where would I go to find out the information that you just gave us?
You can go to the public safety website for here at the city. We have dropdowns as it relates to this. We're currently working through the Pastors Association in collaboration with Mayor Paris on building a database for service providers and a matrix for that, so people will be able to access that through the city and whatever agencies that you, as a council, deem that is appropriate for us to send that matrix to for service providers, something to send to the schools as well. And that's something we should actually have out for dissemination to Mr. Bozigan in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Lee, you've done a great job with AB 109, Proposition 47, 57, you and Criminal Justice, so thank you for, and I'm looking at the early statistics and the numbers are down, so with those, you've done a great job.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to give the credit, Randy has to put up with me a lot. Randy smiles, but he really doesn't feel a smile sometimes. We work together, but fortunately, we've been friends a long time, and we can speak straight to each other on resolving these issues. But the station's done a great job, also the other partners we have through Criminal Justice with the CHP, with the DA's office, with working with the courts, all this stuff has come together collectively. But I think in light of what's occurred with Prop 47, Prop 57, we're going to save money, resources in the end, so it's not just good for the community or the individuals that may be considering perpetrating some type of crime or victimizing people, the reality of it is, it's also a resource management tool for us. The less things we have to respond to based on that level, the more things we can do for the community on a quality of life basis. Thank you, sir.
Allison, I have an empty chair up here, and I have a deputy mayor in the audience. Can I sit him in the chair?
Sure, he may not vote, but he may sit in the chair.
Now, you're in trouble. NB2, Mark?
Get comfortable.
Don't mind him.
He's a larger-than-life presence, it's hard not to tell. Personality-wise, for anyone out there that's mad at me, personality-wise. Vice Mayor Chris, city council members, it's a pleasure to be before you today. Before you is the introduction of some ordinances that will establish the commissions going forward and also do some cleanup items suggested by council. This was brought up by Mayor Paris last week with the council, or last meeting. This is not appointing commissioners, that will be in the future as the mayor nominates commissioners, that could be as early as the next meeting on June 27. Essentially, what this does is, the city will continue at the end of the day, have a planning commission, there is no ordinance before you to change that, an architectural design commission, a criminal justice commission, a new commission called the Homeless Impact Commission, and essentially recognizing that the Neighborhood Vitalization Commission has morphed into dealing more with health issues, and you will have a health, Healthy Community Commission. There are some technical changes made, and the most important change, I believe, is that each of the commissions will have three alternates that will be nominated by the mayor and appointed by the council. That will ensure that we have a quorum. We have quorums at lots of meetings, but there are times we don't, and that's inconvenient for the other commissioners. So, that's it. Allison is prepared to answer any technical questions you may have, and I stand ready to answer any questions as well.
We have one speaker card. So, if you'd stand by, Fran?
I think I got my question answered, but through Allison. I need the form.
Okay.
As I said it there, I want to get on the ball here with you guys.
Great.
I can't talk very well because I've had trouble with my throat.
What?
I have trouble with my throat. I went to the doctor today. And, uh, laugh. Here's my stick. That's okay. I'll take it in stride.
I let Fran and anyone else know that if you want to apply to be on any of these commissions, go see the city clerk at the city clerk's office.
Isn't the application actually online?
So, the application is online if you have access to the Internet, so...
I do, but I already have my hard copy.
Okay. Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Mark, is there any age limit on that for the applicant?
That is a really good question, which I don't know the answer to. I believe it's 18, but I don't know.
You have to be a resident of the city. There is not a minimum age limit, no, stated, I would...
So, high school student can apply for that?
Can apply. I don't know if they would be selected to apply.
Just wanted to know, thank you.
That's a good question.
What if they were Ms. Lancaster?
She's a Perkley grad, so that's a 10-point improvement in the score. You could start out with 10 extra points.
Not plus or minus.
You start out with 10 extra points in the mayor's book. Okay.
Things have changed at Perkley.
Yes.
That's why it's plus now. When Mark went, it was minus.
Thank you.
Still value my job.
Okay, I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a recommendation that we introduce ordinance 1024, 1025, 1026, and 1027.
Second that.
We have a motion to introduce all the ordinances, 1024 through 27. Let's vote. Motion carries unanimously. NB3, adopt citywide safe routes to the master plan. I don't think we have any speaker cards, but I'd like to hear the presentation on it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chris, and members of the city council. The item before you is the adoption of the City of Lancaster's Citywide Safe Routes to School Master Plan. We're really excited to finally get to this point. This is a citywide plan that covers all 30 of our public schools. It was funded through two different grant programs, the Healthy Eating Active Living Grant Program through the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, and a subsequent Active Transportation Program Grant through the state of California. I'd like to introduce to you our primary consultant on this project, Ryan Snyder of Transpo Group, who will give you a brief rundown of the preparation of the plan and the contents.
All right. Thanks, Brian, and thank you. So, just to give you an overview of the process that we went through, we created safe routes to school plans for, as Brian said, every one of the public schools in the city, and showing the process. There's two primary purposes of having safe routes to school plans. First, we want to make it safer for students to walk and bicycle to school. And second, we want to encourage more to do so for health reasons and other reasons. Good safe routes to school programs have what we call the five Es. The engineering component, which is what we spend a lot of our consultant time on, is where we go out and see what we can do to the intersections to make them safer to cross and to add sidewalks where they're needed and bike lanes, and any kind of physical improvements that might be needed in the streets. But it's also important that the schools have ongoing programs to educate students on how to ride a bicycle safely, and for elementary students, how to cross the street safely, as well as education to parents about driving safely around schools, and also encouragement is another important component of it, is the promotional campaign where we're trying to encourage more students to walk and bicycle, and we'll have contests and walking school buses and walking events and a number of things like that to encourage them. We also have an enforcement program that's really important, that the rules around the school for pickup and drop-off, as well as any of the traffic laws are followed and enforced. And then last, there's an evaluation component, so you kind of track progress over the years, and we hope that we can see progress. So, this process, this planning process began in July of 2013. It was funded by both a Caltrans and a SCAG grant, and the city brought us on as a consultant team, and we also had partners with the AV Partners for Public Health. So, they were a big part of this effort as well. And then, the school district were important partners. And we had a technical advisory committee as well that kind of steered the planning process. We started off, most important, with the Safe Routes to School workshops. This is an important part of the planning process, where we go to the schools, and we have parents and principals and students and crossing guards and all the people at that school tell us what the safety issues are around their school that might need addressing or might prevent more students from walking or bicycling. And that's where we kind of, we do a mapping exercise where they draw the common routes to school, they'll circle the intersections that need improvements, they'll tell us where sidewalks are missing and the like, and we do site visits, and then we go out and do fieldwork, and then we create the plan from there. We also conducted surveys to find out how students are currently getting to school, and with survey results, every school, you know, we walk, bicycle, school bus, and so forth, we got all those surveys. For each school, we also had a crash map that we produced that showed pedestrian and bicycle crashes near the schools. And we had a suggested routes map that gives students an idea of what routes might be good ones to use to get to school. They have, for example, traffic signals at intersections that you need to cross and the like. And we have a plan map. The plan maps show where all of the engineering improvements were made, and they show the common routes to school. For each one of the sort of intersections or locations that we planned improvements, we had diagrams and a bullet-pointed list of the changes that would need to be made to make it safer, and both linear diagrams like this as well as intersection diagrams like the previous. And then, for each one of them, we had a program plan as well, so that each school had a mini safe routes to school plan of its own. So, the next steps are to continue carrying out the programs at the schools. I know some of the schools are going strong right now, and they're, you know, working on their programs. Approval of the plan is an important part, and we hope that's what we'll do tonight. And then, the important thing that the plan does for the city is it gives you a document that enables the city to go out and seek funds to pay for the improvements that we planned. And this is where the real value comes in. I think the city's already been using it to get money, so this is really an important part of it. And because you have a plan, you're one of the few cities, there's a rapidly growing number of cities that have safe routes to school plans, but Lancaster is one of the first cities to have one. And so, when you compete for funding, you'll compete very well because Caltrans and the other funding sources really like cities that have shown the initiative to have a sort of a deliberate plan that's well thought out. And then, when you get the money, you construct the physical facilities and then monitor the programs at each school and keep it going. So, the safer routes to school plan aligns with the other plans that the city has, it's consistent with the city master plan of trails and bikeways, so it fits in with all of those. And for that, I'll open it up for questions for either myself or for Brian.
I have a question. I guess the great news is that we are putting a plan together, but I was wondering about the execution of the plan throughout the year. How do you keep the document alive throughout the school year?
Well, it's, to large degree, it's up to the schools and the school districts to do that, to carry out the program. So, there's really, there's two primary components. There's the programs at the schools, and the schools are responsible for that. The city's responsibility is to go out and seek funds and to put the physical improvements out. However, there's something the city could do. Now that you've got this plan, you're in a very strong position to apply for what's called non-infrastructure grants. So, you could apply for money to pay for some of these ongoing programs at the school, and/or you could apply for money to fund a safe routes to school coordinator. So, there could be that role for the city if you wanted.
So, is that part of what you put together already, or...
Yeah, that's the sort of thing in the plan.
Have that as an alternative?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Voelz, do you have any questions?
I know you do.
I don't have any questions. We had two public hearings on this, and the commission studied it thoroughly. It's an excellent program and very well done.
Great.
And the commission, of course, recommending approval.
I see we have the superintendent from West Side School District. Do you need, do you like to say a few words? I'd rather you come up here if possible. Can you guys watch her belongings for her?
First and foremost, I would want to thank the city for initiating this process. This is a great opportunity for us in the school district to provide safer routes to school. I always am interested, when I go to school, I always go and look at the bike rack, and I'm amazed. I might find one bike there. Kids do not bike to school. Their parents drive them, they don't walk to school. So, anything we could do to improve that would be helpful. We worked with the city a few years ago to get the walking school bus going. You know, it works for a week or so, and then pretty soon, everybody's back in their car again. Our parents are very concerned about the neighborhoods. I don't know why. You know, we have safe neighborhoods around the schools, but that's not the perception of people. So, I think whatever we can do, one, to get kids out walking, it's better for their health, you know, I watch parents sometimes go from one end of the street in their car to the school that's on the other end. They could have walked, been home, had a cup of coffee, but they're in that line. I mean, it's just, it's an amazing thing to me because, you know, it's a great opportunity to talk to your child. Most of our walk distances are a mile and a half. Most of our walk distances are a mile and a half. That's much more doable. Around our schools, you'll see parents parked an hour, hour and a half before school gets out to get their spot, to get their child. So I mean, I think there's other ways for us to go about it and I think this is a great start.
Can you see anything in this that we need to improve?
No, and we appreciate that you've been out to talk to our families and our employees about the areas that we have concerns about. Anything we can do in this realm, I think, is going to be of vast improvement.
Great.
And it's a great partnership. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Brian, do you have anything else?
Yes, just a couple of things. To reiterate, we did have a community partner, AV Partners for Health. They were present at all of the walk audits that we did at the schools. They were a very, very good organization to help us out. And reiterating again, we really do appreciate the support that we got from all of our school districts. Lancaster School District, East Side Union School District, West Side Union School District and the Antelope Valley Union High School District. One final thing, our assistant planner, who was our primary staff member overseeing this project, Elma Watson, retired at the end of 2015, but I would like to acknowledge the incredible amount of work that she did on this program also.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions? Okay. I need a motion.
A motion that we adopt Resolution Number 17-27.
Second then.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Motion passes with four yes votes. And before, we have no speaker cards. Everyone take a look at this.
Yep.
Jeff, I just have one question on it. On, let me pull it up.
Do you have a question on speed limit going up on one of the streets?
On Section Five, under the summary and conclusions, it shows that 15th Street East to Lone Oak, you're changing the speed limit. Is that a typo?
Has to be.
It says on here, 15th Street East.
It's got to be a typo because there's Lone Oak runs parallel to 15th.
It's on 5.0. The pages weren't numbered, so. Under the Lancaster Boulevard, it goes down, it's the second one down, it says 15th Street East to Lone Oak.
Yeah, it's got to be a typo.
I'll have the city engineer take a quick look at it. Yeah, I believe it's a typo and it's 15th West.
Okay, can we make sure that we fix that?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance Number 1023 establishing speed limits in the City of Lancaster.
As amended, as discussed?
As amended, as discussed.
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote. We have four yes votes. Okay, PH1, we're going to open the public hearing. Go ahead.
Vice Mayor Chris, City Councilmember, as commissioners, Deputy Mayor. It's a pleasure to be before you today to present the city's proposed 1718 budget. You will be considering adoption on the 27th meeting. The city is in good financial shape, which you'll see. We're preparing for the future, we are prepared for the future and the needs of Lancaster residents. Just a couple of things before we get into it. Number one, our budget team used to consist of Jason and myself and Barbara Boswell, who's since retired. We have now added to the budget team, the executive budget team, Toy Chisholm and Pam Statsman, our finance director, and in the city manager's office, Toy. They did a remarkable job, so it's really a pleasure working with them and I think you'll see that throughout. One of the things about a budget too that people need to understand is if you have to have meetings with your council to just understand what they want or such, you're not doing your job. This council is very engaged and our commissioners are engaged. So we meet almost daily, it seems like, and talk about the issues of the community. So a budget should be an outgrowth of those discussions throughout the year and I can assure you in Lancaster it is. Council is not shy about looking at things that need to be improved and council and staff takes that challenge. Thanks to council, having reserves and financial stability as a primary thing, I'm happy to report we have a 28% financial reserve on the general fund. The city also enjoys a double A credit rating and we maintain a conservative approach and assist for a sustainable model for the budget. So let's get into some things. I will turn it over to Pam after my section's done and then Jason will wrap it up for us. Next, please. Or I could do it this way too. That actually seemed more efficient, so we'll go with the clicker thing. A budget is a roadmap. It's not a yes or no document. And budget is intended to set parameters and boundaries but allow you to be nimble throughout the year. If you look and say, wow, I'd love to take advantage of that opportunity, but it's not in the budget, you're not doing your job either as a council or as a staff and we don't do that. We look at new revenue streams, we look at maintaining operating reserves, and the first and foremost, we want to make sure we have a balanced budget. And I'm happy to report to you that all of those things are in there. There are a couple focuses and priorities we have. One is municipal leadership. It's no secret to this council that we all like to be first at something. It's not just fun to be first, it's profitable. And whether it's streetlights or LCE or any of those things, being first is profitable and makes some sense. Financial stability is key. Financial stability is not just saving money, it's looking for additional revenue streams. I want to thank Vice Mayor Chris, who led our efforts a few years ago working with waste management. We're able to increase significantly the franchise fees and the services provided to our residents at minimal to no cost. That's an example of having money for the general fund so we can pay for things like law enforcement when they increase. Public safety in Lancaster, as you'll hear in a minute, is doing very, very well. That's out of creativity. Sure, we have the largest contract in LA County, but just spending the most money doesn't mean you're going to be safe or effective and that's not what we do here. Infrastructure is key. I know for Councilmember Mann, that's been a big issue of his roads and such. I know same thing, that was the first conversation I ever had with Ms. Underwood Jacobs was the condition of the road. So over the last few years, Raj has been out with our staff, talking to the community, listening, and we are funding Revive 25 at $10 million a year. We also are acquiring our streetlights, which you'll hear about in a few minutes. Economic development is key. We're blessed right now in a real strong economy in the Antelope Valley, whether it's Northrop coming in, BYD expanding, new dealerships this week. I think we're having a grand opening or at least a groundbreaking for the largest ram truck dealership in North America, actually. They sell the most ram trucks in LA County, they're always number one. And the other is maintaining and expanding city services. This will be the largest capital improvement program in the city's history this year that you will be considering. One of the projects in there, Jason will talk about, is summer of sidewalks, where we're going to deal with all the sidewalk issues over a 90-day period, as opposed to just doing them in dribs and drabs. There's things, you know, Poppy Festival was probably the best poppy festival we ever had this year, but it takes a lot to make something that you do for 26 straight years new and exciting and different and stuff. And those are the kinds of attention to detail that this staff focuses on. Simply put, we try to look at the budget where we have prudent financial resources to do it and we have financial stability and we match those resources with the services that are necessary. One of the keys to that is to have reserves and to be prepared for the unexpected. You'll see there are a list of things, but just a couple. Number one, you have to prepare for emergencies. It's not just the emergency, but it's the recovery from the emergency. You can have an earthquake as an example and you can recover, but that doesn't mean your businesses are recovered. That doesn't mean you're going to have a sales tax flow for a number of months and you have to be prepared for that. The other thing, as you know, is to make money, you have to have some money. And this council, by being smart, has had the opportunity to have investments before them, the opportunity to have money to start Lancaster Choice Energy and to start our streetlight acquisition. That's been critically important. So let's delve into the reserves for a moment. First is financial stability reserve. That is required by council. That is for the uncertainty to offset quantifiable revenue and expense uncertainties. You know you're going to have economic downturns, you know that there's going to be something that the state legislature or someone does that is not going to be in the benefit of the cities. And there's variable business costs like legal issues and things that come up. So you have to have that. That's a council policy. In addition to that, we have another 10%, which is our contingency reserve. That's for national disasters, unforeseen events, et cetera. And then in addition to that, as I mentioned before, it's very important to have an investment reserve. Money that you can invest in people and in things and one-time costs that you can leverage to get more. Lancaster Choice Energy and streetlight acquisition are examples of that. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends as a best practice, two months of reserves of your general fund. Our city is approaching double that, it's approaching almost four, which is really good, but it's still four months. I mean, in my opinion, you can never have too much reserve in financial security, but this city is well-served right now. The budget is driven by the council. It's driven by open communications between the council, the community, the commissions and staff. It reflects those services that the community has asked for and it reflects the efficiencies that staff and council have tried to put in there. We look every year at the revenues we have, we look at what we need to do and we ensure that we present a balanced budget to council each year to consider. One of the key things that goes overlooked sometimes is partnerships. We, as a city staff of 240 people, as a council, five people, do not create everything and if everyone just depends on that small group of people, it's not going to happen. This community steps up with partnerships and the businesses step up with partnerships. We had the pleasure of being at the, when Mike Sullivan, the LA car guy, was introduced at Lancaster Subaru and Lancaster Honda. One of the things that made all of us proud is when he said he was here because Lancaster's business friendly. And he kept making the point that this would never happen in Santa Monica, I'd never be open by now, I'd never do this, I'd never do that. We had our whole council there to greet him and that was a shock to him, but it's not a shock to us. The other thing is, we always look for cost-saving measures. How do we be more efficient? The LED lights is an example. We bought all 18,000 lights from Southern California Edison, but they're being retrofitted with LED lights, which will save hundreds of thousands of dollars and went eligible for rebates. But there's always unintended benefits when you're doing the right thing. An example, the gentleman, Joe, who is sort of leading up our retrofit program with the contractor, went out one night in his uniform, he drove his own car, drove in his uniform to a neighborhood to see how the lights looked in the neighborhood. They put one up just to test it out. And people came up to him and thanked him, said, that's great, you know, thank you for this. And he said, no, the lights are great, great, aren't they? Their point was, yeah, the lights are great, but it's so nice out here, the light, that our kids are now playing late at night, every night, later than they ever could have played. Well, that's a benefit that no one could have foreseen, except when you do the right thing, you then are engaging a neighborhood. And if anyone's seen how the lights change the look of a neighborhood, it's truly startling. Some of the focus, as you see up there, we look at new revenues. I've spoken about franchise fees, I've spoken about some of the Lancaster Choice Energy, which Jason will talk a little bit more about. But there's also things that even if we don't vote for, we want to make sure that we use properly. For example, Measure M and a state transportation bill passed. I do not believe that the Antelope Valley voted for either one of those, yet we will be the beneficiary. That's going to be worth about almost $2.5 million this budget year and $5 million every budget year following this. So that allows us to invest more in our roads and such. As the vice mayor alluded to, public safety in Lancaster is going really well right now. Thank the Sheriff's Department, our Public Safety Office and all those involved. Crime is down 9% in the first half of 2017 in Lancaster. That's a pretty big deal when it's going up a lot of other places. We still maintain, under your direction, the largest sheriff's contract in LA County and there's no reduction in force. We are taking a fresh look with the new captain, Todd Weber and Lee DeRico, at our deployments and I think you'll see some additional improvements and things there. We've already spoken about economic development. We are enjoying an unemployment rate under 5% for the first time in forever that I can remember since about 2008. And there's lots of manufacturing jobs coming in. It's not just BYD, Morton, Lance, but Northrop will be bringing almost 1,000 manufacturing jobs initially to the Antelope Valley. And we want to be well poised to address those and support that. Terms of infrastructure, we are looking not just at traditional infrastructure, but Jason will talk about how we're using technology to embed in the infrastructure to get data. Jason will also speak about the next 50. The thing that I would like to leave you with is that we take it very seriously, and I'd like to leave the public with, we take very seriously being stewards of taxpayer resources. It's not just saving money, it's doing really good things with the money and how we spend it. The council's been a pleasure to work with in that regard. I'd like to turn it over to Pam now. This is Pam's first budget as a finance director and there were times when she thought it might be her last budget, I think. But one of the things Pam's done for us in 30 years, in 20-some years, is she's always been the one who takes care of our financial audits and the long-term financial reports. So she has as good a handle as anyone in the city on the long-term finances of the city. But marrying that with a more short-term document of the budget has been, it's been great. So we're fortunate to have Pam. And she doesn't want me to tell you this, but today is Pam's birthday she's spending with us. So happy birthday, Pam, you get to do a budget presentation.
Thank you.
Did I use the clicker?
No. Which button is which? Thank you, Mark. Now we get to my favorite part, the numbers. Council, it's my pleasure to share with you the city's proposed fiscal year 2017-18 budget at $187.7 million. The funding will be allocated between operations and maintenance, capital improvements, personnel and capital outlay. The budget is funded by taxes, fees for services, special district assessments, grants, the city's own LCE, the Community Choice Aggregate and other sources. The money is also comprised of general fund, restricted funds and special revenue funds. Once we conservatively project the resources, also known as the revenues, and responsibly allocate those for the delivery of service based on the council direction and community needs, we also take into account the allocation is dependent upon the type of funding that's available, the restrictions and if there are any. The most flexible type of fund is the general fund. The general fund proposed expenditure totals $67.6 million. And again, it is the city's largest unrestricted funding source. The reason that we spend a lot of time reviewing the forecasts is to make sure that ongoing expenditures are covered by ongoing revenues. At the end of the day, the difference between the revenue in and the expenditures out equals a balanced budget. With regard to the general fund revenues, as you can see from the pie chart, the sales and use tax is the largest source of general fund revenue, followed closely by property tax, charges for services, grants and other revenues. The sales and use tax is approximately $20.4 million for the 1718 year and property tax is estimated at $19.7 million. With regards to the expenditure side of things...
Can you go back one, Pam? Can you go back one?
Absolutely.
I just want to make a point.
Yes.
Can you show on there or tell us how much the fines are for like traffic tickets?
The fines and forfeitures are about 1% of the general fund budget.
So the city doesn't rely on writing tickets to make any money?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make that point, that it's important to...
No.
To make that, that's not what they're out there doing.
No. And you will see in the next slide, the expenditures reflective for public safety. So on to the expenditure side of things. The proposed fiscal year 1718 general fund expenditures are requested at $67.6 million. The expenditures include funding for operating departments, transfers out, and reserves. As you can see, again, from the pie chart, public safety remains the largest general fund expenditure at $29.5 million, as evidenced by the decreasing crime rate statistics and programs such as the one that Lee talked to you about tonight. We feel that this is money well-spent to keep our citizens and residents safe.
Pam, as a city, where do we rank?
[laughter] We rank number one.
It's always number one.
We rank number one in LA County. Yes. If you're not first, you're last, right?
Right.
So we are number one. Yes.
That means we spend more money protecting our citizens than any other city.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Parks, Recreation, and Arts is the second-largest general fund expenditure, and we believe this expenditure is impactful in the daily lives of our residents and visitors, in the numerous special events that we have throughout the year, and when they go to use our well-maintained parks and facilities. Together, the public safety and Parks, Recreation, and Arts expenditures make up 2/3 of the city's general fund budget, almost a quarter, and almost a quarter of the city's overall budget. Again, through council discussion and direction, we put a strong emphasis on spending funds on programs that benefit the taxpayers funding those programs. In addition to general fund, the city is blessed with an abundance of capital improvement funds. These will allow us to get some much-needed capital improvement programs done. It excites me to see these programs come to fruition because you can see the fruits of our labor in the roads that the public drives on, and again, when they come to use our facilities. At this time, I'll turn it over to Jason, who will go through the capital improvement program. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. We're also happy to present today that we have a $45.7 million capital improvement budget. And just to note, last year was $24 million, so we have almost doubled the capital improvement budget this year, most notably because of the work of our NCTC members, Marvin and Ken, who worked very hard to get our fair share of funds, of Measure R funds. That is directly reflective in this budget. $23 million is a direct result of their efforts in fighting for our fair share of money, and that's going to be directly placed into our road system, interchanges, and things of that nature. So this is a huge undertaking and a really great opportunity. The capital improvement budget is comprised of a number of different sources. As you know, and will share with the public, many of these sources are directly and specifically related to certain functions. Most of them are roads-related, transit, traffic, and other special funds that are in the capital improvement funding. So a lot of times we get questions about, "Why'd you build those bike lanes, right? Or why'd you do that? Or how come you're spending your money there, you should be spending it here?" A lot of times, we do that because those are the monies that are specified for those programs. So when we see Measure R, those are roads funds, so we need to spend those monies in roads and road infrastructure. So you'll see that as a very high priority. And the same is true for our urban structures monies and some of our traffic impact monies. Those are specific revenues that are to be spent for specific purposes.
Can you go into the specifics a little bit more in regards to, like, say Measure R? That when you say roads, I cannot use the money that we just received from Measure R for the 14 on the 50th Street East.
Correct. There are specific limitations to the type of funds you use and for what you use them for. So in those $23 million, those are specified for the interchanges and a mile away from those interchanges. So it can have an impact in some of those areas, but it cannot be spent off highway or on non-collector streets. Residential streets are sometimes restricted in some of these fundings that are, those are typically general fund expenses and other gas tax revenues.
I'm just trying to get you to answer some of the questions that the council does have, because a lot of this that we do makes no sense, or that we could use the funding better in other places, but we just don't have the funding, or it's restricted for that purpose. So it's, I would prefer that we use some of the other money somewhere else, but if the Measure R money is restricted to Highway 14, then that's where we have to use it.
That's a very accurate statement.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, this year, as Mark mentioned, Revive 25 is one of our highest priority projects. That's $10 million specifically delivered to the maintenance of residential and local streets, right? Marvin talks about Highway 14 and some of the other interchange stories, and other people are saying, "Why don't you fix a road in front of my house," right? Revive 25 is a direct result of your priority setting that says, "We are going to improve every lane mile within the city of Lancaster city limits by 2025." Happy to report that since setting that goal as a council, we've accomplished this with 250 miles of road, and this year's budget includes a 300-mile, or 300 miles to be improved under this year's budget. So as we're tracking this, we're doing public outreach, as Mark mentioned with Raj and some of our staff, we're out there telling the story, and it's shocking how, when you tell a story about roads, it sometimes isn't exciting because you don't tell it the right way. And Raj and Louise in the Public Works Department, or Development Services Department, have been really telling that story very well, about Revive 25 and why it's important and how we're doing it. We've got included in here bus stop improvements, pedestrian gap closures, and road closures. So pedestrian gap closures, we talked about with the safer schools, is making sure that when we have people walking on streets, and you see them throughout the community, where you have a development end, and there's a vacant lot, and there's a development that begins, well, that's a gap closure. Same is true in our road system, and in this budget, we're approving the widening between Avenue L and Avenue M on 10th Street West. So that's one of those major gap closures that many people have always had the same questions of our council members and of you, saying, "Why does that exist?" Well, hopefully, that gap closure is going to no longer exist. We'll be widening that street this year. Intersection controls and traffic signal upgrades, very similar projects, and we're always trying to monitor and upgrade those systems. The signal synchronization project, that was partially funded by the ABQMD money, was directly noticeable by every member of the traveling public. If you haven't noticed it, maybe you're not driving the right streets or something like that, but those signal synchronizations, those upgrades are directly noticeable by everybody who travels, and we want to continue that. Not only continue synchronization, but also improve the technology and the capabilities of those systems, and some of those will be coming forward as we deliver those products to you.
And that, it became a savings of, I think it was $9.5 million of savings that the citizens of Lancaster have just because of gas savings?
Correct. Gas, time, energy, the amount of effort that you spend getting through those intersections now is far greater than it was before. That's for sure. We also have a sewer to maintain. I think it goes unknown, a lot of these things are underground and we don't see them, but we have a sewer to maintain on a regular basis to assure that sanitary sewer overflows don't happen, to keep it maintained, and to make sure that it's an operational function, and that it's always going downhill, if you know what I mean. The opposite is not, the opposite is not the goal. Mark also touched on the fact that we're calling it the "Summer of Sidewalks," right? We've seen these, and you have received these calls and complaints that, "Hey, the tree has uplifted my sidewalk." And, you know, a lot of times the responses will get to it. Well, you know, this year, we're focusing a large effort in a three-month period, where we have a large contract being led to repair many, if not the majority, of those problem sidewalks. And it's a concerted effort to not have our crews go out and fix them here and there as complaints occur, but understanding that these are problem areas and to fix them all at once. So hopefully, you'll see crews out there repairing those sidewalks very soon, over the next three months, and have a major impact. We also have the K-8 fencing for the bike paths, and this is just an example of our continued investment in the bike paths and the safety of travelers, all travelers within our road system. That includes pedestrian, bicyclists, motorists, so that we have a complete street that is able to be safe and operated efficiently. In addition, we have some improvements at the municipal stadium. This is also an example of reinvesting in those systems that have been neglected over a period of time. We know that our systems are aging, right? Our roofs get older, our pools get, you know, the plaster gets older. Some of these things happen on a regular basis. The seats at the Jedock Stadium get worn and torn. So we, in this budget, in this capital improvement budget, we've invested and focused energy on rehabbing those functions, right? Maybe not that the citizens see every day, they may not see the roof of the Jane Reynolds Park, or the Jane Reynolds Building. They may not see that, but they know that it's our responsibility as good stewards to fix that, and some of those funds are being placed in there for that purpose. I'm also happy to report that, you know, this is a year that's looking, this is a budget that's looking forward to 2018. A lot of what we've budgeted this year is something that you're going, the many items that you're going to see coming out in this next budget year are exciting to see, there are changes that are happening. But what's first and what's foremost is this is the first turning point of our financial stability, as Mark touched on. This may be the first years in eight or nine since the downturn that we can really start in reinvesting in our infrastructure, reinvesting in our reserves, reinvesting in some of those things that we've neglected, frankly, over the last eight years in these downturns in this economy. But it also allows us to start picturing what's going to be new in the future. How do we reinvest in what's going, when it's going to happen in the future? Specifically, in the budget, we're looking strategically to review our library services, to identify, are we doing that as a city the best way possible? Are we delivering, in conjunction with the county, the best library system that we can? We'll be evaluating that. Toy's going to be leading up that project. We're engaging the community in the expansion of Prime Desert Woodlands, which your council has been integrally involved in, in not only receiving the funds, but also making the project happen, is finding out, how are we going to expand that park? What is it going to look like? Engaging the community to do that. We're expanding our Smart Cities effort. When we talk about the streetlights and the underground facilities and our traffic signals and the acquisition of our streetlights, these are very key components of a Smart Cities program, is that when we look at them, we look at a pole and we look at a light. We try to look at it differently from a Smart Cities perspective. We see access to power, right? We see 19,000 power access locations throughout the community now. That can be Wi-Fi repeaters, that can be communication devices, that can be data collection points, that can be communication devices with autonomous vehicles. When you start thinking of these systems as it relates to a Smart Cities technology function, these become very high-tech, very opportunistic programs that you'll be seeing rolling out here in the near future. We're excited about this one. I think, you know, the Smart Cities moniker's been thrown around a bunch, but this really is a tool and an opportunity for our community to look to that. What are we going to be like 50 years from now? How are we going to be driving 50 years from now? How are we going to be living 50 years from now? And this allows us to get to that point. We get to continue to showcase our ZNE efforts through our ordinances, our programs, Lancaster Choice Energy and the California Choice Energy Authority, as we're expanding those, expanding our wings to other cities. This is an exciting time. Again, we're approving 300 miles of roads. We're moving access to barriers in our parks through ADA compliances and ADA improvements, and of course, we're celebrating the city's 40th anniversary this year. But what's great about working here and working with you guys is that, one, you come up with some crazy ideas that we really enjoy implementing, and, two, when we come up with crazy ideas, you allow us to implement them, so...
Why did you look at Ken?
Because he's the craziest. But you trust in our efforts to do this, and we're excited about that, and we're all proud to, and I think I speak on behalf of all the city staff, we're proud to work here and proud to be doing what we're doing, and that we can keep up with the challenges of doing things differently, keep up with the challenges that other cities look at us and say, "How do you do that? You know, how do you accomplish that?" And our first answer is leadership, and, you know, this is my conclusion, but thank you guys for the opportunity to do this.
Great job. Pam, great job. Mark, great job. Staff, great job.
I have one question.
Go ahead, Rush.
Jason, I have one question for you. By the way, great presentation, and we're excited about this. You mentioned about the Wi-Fi on the Boulevard. How soon are we thinking about starting that, and how's it going to benefit, like, businesses and residential?
Right. The Smart Cities program, as Raj mentioned, is a, it's a comprehensive program that includes telecommunications services, data management and data capture, multiple functions from a technology perspective. But the first project you're going to see, as you mentioned, is a Wi-Fi on the Boulevard. So what happens is, as our systems become so driven by telecommunications services and connectivity, our cell phones, our kids, our cars, everything is connected, is that this opportunity to create a Wi-Fi network. And between our traffic signals, well, between City Hall, our traffic signals, and our streetlights, we have the opportunity to create a mesh network of Wi-Fi throughout the community. Our first hub is going to be in downtown Lancaster, or the Boulevard, that'll allow free public Wi-Fi and accessibility. So that'll be the first project you see. There's some others that have come out, you know, the online permitting, online business licenses, some of these things that are considered that Smart City program that allow better access. We're coming out with a better, a new app, a new city app. A lot of these things are covered into that Smart Cities network, but from the Wi-Fi perspective that you've talked about, is we hope that you'll be able to be on the Boulevard and have free access to Wi-Fi, provided to you by your city government.
Thank you. I think that's really great. And one other thing, Mark, about the library, you mentioned earlier, and could you elaborate a little bit about that?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Toy Chisholm to talk about that. She's leading up our efforts and has some prior experience from her last employment as well, too.
Sure. So basically, what, can you hear me? Yes. What we'll do is take a review of the library services and programs that are being offered by the county to the residents of Lancaster. A community assessment, basically to find out what programs and services and needs are out there, as opposed to making assumptions, work with the county, and then present to the council different options that might be available for us to enhance those services and program offerings. It's a 40, I believe it's 43,000 square foot building, and we believe that we can improve as the community has changes, so do the community needs, and this will be an opportunity for us to make sure that our services are responsive and relevant.
Angela?
Ken?
Oh, good. I think you're... Staff did an outstanding job, and I'm very appreciative that we're spending a lot more money on the roads this year. I think that's probably one of the biggest, I think, complaints that we get today from citizens of Lancaster, is, you know, again, that's what we get usually to and from work or to school, or to moms taking kids to soccer practice, go shopping. And I think that's, you know, probably one of our vital, critical infrastructure that's important, that we take good care of, so I'm looking forward to the investment.
You're going to see it. Last thing I'd like to mention, even though Mayor Paris is not here, I think we'd all agree that a lot of the firsts that we've achieved have been either spearheaded or led by the mayor as well, too. And so this is a really good time in Lancaster. We have a good council, we have a good staff, and we have a really engaged community, and sky's the limit for this city. I just want to point out that, you know, being number one in, you know, that we spend more money towards public safety is a big issue, so we're very interested in making sure our law enforcement has everything that they need. And our jobs, our unemployment rate is, what, 4.5%?
It's like 4.6, and I think it's even going down a little bit.
So, I mean, we're making sure that people have jobs, where a lot of big things are coming down the tube. Education, for the education, we're looking at Safe Streets. That's a good example of what we're doing, you know, with the education and the health care. In the last four years, we've added 500,000 square feet of new health care facilities throughout the valley with Kaiser Hospital, the MAC, the City of Hope Building, all those new buildings, new facilities. So I think we're doing very well for everything that we're accomplishing. So thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Fran?
Uh-oh.
Oh, she's going to have nice things to say.
Fran gave me that "Uh-oh." I don't like when you look at me like that.
Okay. Wow. This is on the budget, since your bu... Since your budget is balanced, and you have so much extra revenue, and we're talking about healthy communities.
I didn't see any extra.
Wow. I saw it. And anyway, what I'm getting down to, bottom line is, if, I don't want to make it just Lancaster, this should be part of Lancaster and the county. I'm striving again to get the kitchen at the Lancaster, I mean, yeah, at our senior center. their senior center, to cook our own food there.
Hot. Are they still bringing it from?
They're still bringing it from West Covina. That's a two and a half hour or more drive, and most of the time it's frozen. When they bring it, they have to put it in microwaves. They try their best. Rocco, that he's the head of the, he's the head of the kitchen there. He does a good job, and was what he has to work with. But we're trying to get money so we can get a chef or a cook that can come and cook on the premises. We have all the equipment, but we need the, we need the bodies to come in and cook the right foods for our people, for our people.
Mark, can you set up a meeting with me and the supervisor, and so we can talk about, you know, the different funding sources that we can use for this?
Gladly, and I think it's a good time, too, with the expansion of the senior center coming.
Yeah, it'd be a real good time.
Yeah, because, don't forget, we don't only feed our people here, our Lancaster, we feed Palmdale seniors, we feed Little Rock, we feed all the surrounding small areas, small towns, we feed all these people, we feed the.
When you say "we" feed them?
Well, I'm talking about our senior center.
Okay. Do they come here to eat?
No, we take it to them.
Okay.
And then we feed the homebound people also, citizens. So, that's where I was, that's where my eyes were going.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We'll work on it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I had a question. I guess, this is to Mark. Mark, with the drought being almost over, I guess with California, are we going to address the issue with the rainstorms that goes around Lancaster, water flooding of the streets? I know it affected where I have business at tremendously. So I was just wondering, was there anything allocated to kind of help with that issue?
Yeah, that's actually a very, very good question. We continuously have a master plan of drainage, and the CIP attacks that at each time. What we also further do is each time there's a storm, we go out and look at what new things are there and stuff. But yes, your specific location, I'd have to get with you, because I'm aware of that, but the answer is yes. Thank you for bringing that up, because we don't talk about the work of the drainage, how much we invest in drainage each year.
Thank you. Okay. I need a motion.
No, we need to close the public hearing.
Ken's.
We do need to close the public hearing.
Public hearing's closed.
There it is.
Okay.
Marvin appreciates me.
I do. I'm glad you're back from vacation.
Oh, jeez.
I need a motion.
Well, I'll move to make the motion to approve the 2017 Budget and Five-Year Capital Improvement Program.
Second that.
We're approving to schedule this.
We're approving a schedule, actually. I would request that the motion be to conduct the public hearing and then schedule the budget for adoption on June 27th. We did the public hearing.
As so stated by the city attorney. Thank you, Allison.
And I second that on that.
We have a motion and a second to schedule the budget for adoption. All in favor? The, oops. We have four yes votes.
And see, we have Allison, too, to keep us on track. Team effort.
We have no speaker cards for PH2. We'll open the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing.
Waive the staff report.
Waive the staff report. I'm waiting for a motion from you.
I move that we adopt Resolution 17-28.
Second that.
Thank you, Angela. Let's vote. Four yes votes. PH3, we have no speaker cards. We'll open the public hearing. Seeing no one speaking, we'll close the public hearing.
Waive the.
We'll waive the staff report. Can we get Ken an extra mic?
I move that we, I move that we adopt Resolution 17-29 as comprised.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 17-29. Let's vote. We have four yes votes. PH4, we'll open the public hearing, close the public hearing, waive the staff report.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 17-30.
Second that.
Let's vote. Passes with four yes votes. Council reports. Ken? Oh, you want to talk and everything else? Let's talk about your vacation.
No. I was just doing the coaching to make sure that we followed all the legality and relationship to opening and closing public hearings.
I appreciate that so much.
You're supposed to waive the staff report between the open and the close. I'm sorry.
Would you like us to go back and do that?
No, no. But for the record.
Okay. Let's see. Council reports. Went to Thunder on the Lot on Friday, Sunday, is very good. Good job to Parks and Rec. Guys did a wonderful job out there. Good job to Ron and Yvette Imar. Good participation on the Boulevard. There was a lot of people out there on Friday. Also went to, let's see how to phrase this, the Palmdale City Council meeting with Jason and Mark for the LCE, for our CCE, and it was stated that it's when the two cities were going to get along and work together. So, I appreciate that, those statements from the Palmdale City Council. So it was a good, a good thing to see. And good job to Mark and Jason for that. City manager.
Three things. Jeff Hogan is now staring daggers at me because I made them practice two and three times their speed survey presentation, and. But I'm going to make it up to him and announce that he and his staff will be holding a workshop, public workshop, on June 14th, tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 here at Moa Cedar, on one of the vice mayor's favorite subjects, the 15th Street Roundabout. So people will have, people will have the opportunity to go and learn more about the roundabout tomorrow.
Ken went to Italy to check out the roundabouts in Italy.
I bet he didn't get in one accident either, did you, sir?
No, and let me tell you, I don't think north of Rome, I never saw a stoplight or a lighted controlled intersection. There wasn't any. Amazing. Not a one. Drove probably, I don't know, 300 miles north. Never saw one light, one stop. It's all roundabouts and yields. It's amazing how you move traffic without controlled intersections like that. Anyway, I kept thinking of Marvin the whole time I was there.
There's a joke in there somewhere, but I'm not going to.
I'm not touching it.
Number two, the, as the vice mayor said, the Cruisin event on Friday night on the Boulevard was terrific. A huge crowd, good music, and it was very, very well done. And I want to talk about the kids charities, and the Thunder on the Lot benefits kids charities, right? Local charities?
Yes, Thunder on the Lot actually benefits, I think there's 28 different charities and some of the other events. It also benefits some of our homes, our homes that the.
Impact Homes?
The Impact Homes. I think they give thousands of dollars to each Impact Home. So it does that, but it does the charities for the kids. Has for many, many years, it's raised probably $4 or $5 million in that period of time. So it raises about $200,000 to $300,000 a year in just that one event. So it's a great event for people to come out and support the kids.
Yeah, Friday was really well done. And then speaking of well done, the LPAC event, the LPAC Foundation did a phenomenally good event, Blazing Saddles, on June 6th, I think it was, and is probably one of the best ever, one of the funnest, most fun events I've been to. We have a short video here, and it raised over 100 and, was it 108? $108,000 for the LPAC.
What do you get when you have stars, stripes, cowboy hats, and country music? You get Blazing Saddles, the seventh annual LPAC Foundation Gala and Grand Auction, raising money for our local youth to experience the arts. Let's go check it out. Steven, what are we doing here tonight?
Raising some money for the LPAC Foundation. This is the seventh year, so we're looking for another great night, raise a lot of money for the arts and music program, LPAC itself, our new scholarship program, so just trying to keep up the momentum we've had in the past six years.
What's your favorite part about nights like this?
I just love the fact that people can come together, have a great evening out, and at the end of the day, what we're doing is helping kids get exposure to arts and music, and that can only be a benefit to our community.
There are thousands of kids in this valley who have never been to a live performance, and what the foundation does is literally make that available for thousands of kids. So, yeah, it's incalculable, the benefit to our community.
What's the expected attendance tonight?
About 250 people.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, it's great. The community really comes out and supports this. Our auction raises quite a bit of money, and then we have donations at the end, where people can donate whatever they feel is appropriate, and that raises thousands of dollars in itself.
Between the foundation's work and the support of the Choices and Learning Foundation, another local foundation, we're going to be able to give $7,000 tonight, $5,000 to one recipient, and $1,000 to two other recipients.
The Jet Hogs just donated $2,500 apiece to these three people for their scholarships, an additional $7,500.
How do you feel?
It feels very surreal. I don't, I don't believe it, if that makes sense.
Tell us about the process that got you here.
My teacher, Kevin Foster, at Eastside High School, had told us about the scholarship, and I was like, oh, I'll just try out for it. Maybe, you know, I send in my materials, and then they called me back. So I interviewed with them right here in LPAC, and so I'm waiting. I'm so, like, excited. Mr. Todd calls me, and he's like, "Congratulations, you've basically won $5,000." I was like, "Okay."
The outtakes were good, too. There are certain staff members that felt free to grab the microphone and sing and things of that nature, so we'll show you the outtakes later.
Okay. Thank you. City clerk.
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I should do this properly. Good evening, Vice Mayor Chris, and Deputy Mayor. I know your name.
Doris.
Yeah, right. You got it right. And Commissioners, staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name, of course, you know, probably by now is Fran Saraseras, and I'm a senior advocate. I speak for people who can't or won't speak for themselves. I know that Vice Mayor Chris, you and Toy went to the supervisor meeting this morning. I was going to go to here in Lancaster, the library, but I had a doctor's appointment, but that didn't stop me. As soon as I got back, which was, I think, 12:30, turned the TV on real quick to see if it was still on. It was still on, and they were still talking about measure, 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 measurement H. Anyway, so I got in my car, because I can go that far. I can drive near, close by. But I got the tail end because I wanted to speak. And then I was going to stay to speak at the end, but it took too long, and I had to come here. But I'll speak next week. But I wanted to ask you, I didn't get the, I know that they haven't made, they haven't really voted on it as yet. I know it's, well, they did vote on it, but they haven't been able, they haven't given how they're going to distribute the monies yet, right? Because I was going to kind of say something about that, you know, hope we get our little share of the monies. But anyway, I also, real quick, change the subject. I wanted to ask, because on, at the last, well, not the last, on May the 9th, I had asked about the access at the fairgrounds, the parking, the buses and so forth. Has anything been done about that?
We're working on it.
Okay. Because I don't know if I made myself clear, because I know that once the function is closed at the fair at 5:00, everything practically closes up. Got 29 seconds. And, but the thing of it is, if they can't allow a bus to park and stay in the parking lot, in the inside of the gate, they should allow that gate that's going to the, I call it the red building, where they have the horse racing and so forth. That gate should be open, so at least it's accessible for us to go through to get to the other side. Otherwise, we have to go all the way around. Okay. And I want to thank you all. God bless you, and adios.
I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, city council members, I commend all of you. I've been, it's been a while since I've been here. You guys have really been working hard. I appreciate what you're doing for the city. But there's kind of no elaboration on medical facilities as far as the new hospital. We're rounding out around 500,000 population between Palmdale, Lancaster, Coors Hills, Little Rock. And as everybody knows here, if you're in the emergency and if you're not bleeding, you'll be waiting four or five hours. And they've even had ambulances that, I'm not going to per se who, have offered, since the person's not bleeding, to take them over the hill to other communities for their hospitals. I'm just wanting a little bit of elaboration. You mentioned Kaiser. Is Kaiser opening one up? When's the, you know, when's the start and completion dates for these things?
They actually closed their emergency, the emergency status for it, but they, the other emergency services for the MAC was opened. That's on Fifth Street and Avenue I. So there's, it's kind of a balance, and it's balancing out. But more importantly, it's a jurisdictional thing that we don't have jurisdiction inside the hospital. We can help them, we've been helping them. I think Jason sits on the finance board over there, so he's helping them get some of their issues straight. So we are working, but we don't have the jurisdiction to make the improvements that you're requesting. So that's a, it's a jurisdictional crossover, and I would recommend that you go to the hospital board meeting and make those same requests because it's, they're echoed by a lot of.
Is there a group that does that, that goes to those hospital council meetings?
Yeah, we have a group that actually speaks. Some people from, that are common speakers at this chambers, they go there quite often, but we have, we meet with the doctors, we request certain things. We're trying to make different improvements in there as far as having a substation with the sheriff's station inside the hospital area, to find funding for that, so it doesn't commingle the different patients with the other people.
Put another 30 seconds on that. He's talking. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Go ahead and finish.
No, I appreciate your input. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shannon, you want to speak?
Yeah. Yes, I got a couple compliments for you guys.
Are they good?
I said compliments, not complaints. Congratulations on knowing your sister.
Thank you.
My name is Shannon McDonald. I just wanted to give you guys, I had, when you guys keep bringing up the lights, those lights are really, really obvious, they're very apparent. They're, I'm over here on 50th Street, Weston Avenue J, and man, I was like, I looked out the window, I was like, why does it look so much brighter outside? And it is, it's beautiful. It makes the whole street look different. Like, it, it looks totally different than it does during the day naturally, but it's, I just wanted to compliment the city on doing, making those improvements. And I know they're not everywhere yet, but it was really, it's really, really noticeable over there, and I really appreciate that. Whoever is responsible for that, I appreciate that. So, that's all I wanted to say, so I told you I wanted to give you compliments.
Thank you. David.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, good evening, Deputy Mayor, nice to see you up there. As usual, it's a great night. I'm really festive tonight. Tomorrow is my son's 17th birthday. He's born on Flag Day. Now, my family went through the last eight years of a president who was born on my birthday, August 4th, and now that is also Donald Trump's birthday tomorrow. So, my family continues to have a presidential birthday in common. So, that, that's really cool. Today, I was watching the Jeff Sessions testimony before the Senate, and it was just interesting. It was pointed out in there that the Department of Justice has over 10,000 lawyers. And I thought, well, you know, some of that could trickle down to where we need it, and I appreciate everything the city does to work on that. Toy, we mentioned the library and what the community is going to do. I've volunteered at the library for about 15 years with the Friends of the Library, and the real main problem there is that, to affect the quality of service there, is that from the time the doors open, you know, hours before, the homeless people are there to come in and use the bathrooms and just have somewhere to either cool off or warm up. And if we could build some sort of other center where people could have access to those amenities, it would, it would go a long way, because it's, you know, not only the homeless people, which we're eagerly trying to help, but the mentally ill and the people that talk to themselves and the other types of people that you don't really want around your children. So, if we could consider that when we do that, but thanks so much for everything you do, the budget, all of it. I mean, who knew the budget talk could be so exciting, you know? I appreciate that, and I appreciate everything this city does. And again, I'll just say, it makes me feel so much better to be part of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay. Council comments? Criminal justice?
No comments, other than we do have a meeting tomorrow at 10:00 right here in this chamber.
You want to talk about your problem with pharmacies?
I can, I can elaborate on it a little bit. It's lately, there's been a rise in pharmacy break-ins. And I was mentioning to the Vice Mayor that maybe in the criminal justice meetings, or maybe in this, this body here, could, we could discuss an ordinance or some way to strengthen current ordinances to address specifically pharmacy break-in. Banks have a, have an exemption to where they can have the, the single entry doors, but that's a special exemption and can't, but I'm thinking something like that, where one person could be allowed in at a time, or there's, there's some other security measures that they're exempted and they're allowed to do. But I was thinking that maybe that could be implemented for pharmacies, because as we all know, opiate abuse is becoming a huge problem, and it's, and my wife does work in medical, and, and when I go, when I have to go there, I usually see one or two people in there that are, you, you know that their, their purpose there is to, is to, is to get their, their prescriptions, but not necessarily because they need their prescriptions. So, I was, I was, I was hoping that the council or the criminal justice commission could take up some conversation to that regard.
Thank you. Planning? Mr. Vos.
Thank you. This, we have some interesting topics this next Monday night at our commission meeting. Really an exciting project that's come before us. We've had one hearing on it, a 237-acre project out west, housing project with 753 units, which will make a significant impact on the crying need for new housing within our community. A number of other routine items, however, it seems like every meeting, we now have the opportunity to consider mini-marts with alcoholic beverages. The next one is at the northwest corner of I and Sierra Highway. It's an applicant for a 7-Eleven, and I understand we have three or four more in the queue. So, we'll be busy reviewing those again. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Raj?
Yes, I just wanted to share with the rest of the council. I got to speak, spanning chamber, about the V25, and it's really nice, people got to know about our plans for streets and roads improvement, and they really appreciate that. So, my next one, gonna be on 28th Louis Kirby and I Gabor. So, we will be talking about, again, the V25. So, just wanted to share with everybody.
Good. Thanks, Raj. Angela? Ken, you want to talk about roundabouts again?
I'm looking forward to the open house, so they can take all input, and are you gonna be there?
I won't be able to find my way there. Darrell?
I'll pick you up.
Do you have anything?
We're actually in the midst of my first project, teaming up with city manager, we're actually in the midst of doing a citywide collaboration between churches and other CBOs, community-based organizations, do a back-to-school, backpacks, haircuts, school supplies, some massive, we have so far committed about 25 pastors are committed to it, and we have some other organizations that are committing to the program. So, we're looking forward to that. We're almost finished. We're actually having some meetings on that. So, I'm looking forward to having something. That's the first project we're doing, and I'm really excited about it.
Great.
Yeah, so.
Great. Okay. We stand adjourned.
All right.